It's easy to memorize what the late fees are, right? Because you just think, okay, if it's a government loan, late fees four percent, if it's conventional, it's five percent, right? So that's easy. But the seller concessions, yes, that's, that's where it gets a little tricky. The VA selling concession is four percent, but then the FHA and the USDA maximum. Six percent. But now, the conventional loan one, that's the one that it has like several different categories regarding seller concessions. So here's the thing, right, for conventional loans. It's based on, well, okay, so here's the thing. If the LTV is greater than ninety percent. Right?
Right.
So and by the way, the LTV is greater than ninety percent, that means that the bar is really not putting down a lot of money, right?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, that they're putting out, you know? Um, and so if the LTV is greater than ninety percent, then yeah, that means the bar is putting down less than ten percent, right? So the LTV is greater than ninety percent, then the maximum seller concession is three percent.
Okay.
Okay.
So the less they put down, the less the fee.
Or the, the, the less they are able to get help from the seller, right? Yeah, so it's only a small, like seller consent, maximum seller concession is only three percent, very small. Now, if the LTV is greater than seventy-five percent. Up to ninety percent.
But not more.
Right, that's right, not more, right? The, then the maximum seller concession is six percent.
Okay.
Alright, and then if the LTV is seventy-five percent or lower.
Okay.
The maximum seller concessions for, for a conventional loan is nine percent.
Okay, so three.
That's three, three, six, nine.
Three, six, nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, here's another thing, right? If the property is uh, an investment property. Then it's just two percent regardless of what the LTV is, right?
If it's an investment, it's on, on FHA or any loan?
No, 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 wait, we're talking about conventional loan.
Sorry, you're right.
Okay, 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 okay.
I knew that.
Yeah, conventional loan. Yeah, so that's why on Jen's cheat sheet, you see it where she's saying, um. Okay, yeah, you always, she kind of spells it out, yeah, okay, you see the three percent, six percent, nine percent, and the two percent, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, so that's that, alright, so you know those, um. Uh, you know what the funding fee is for a VA loan? It's two point three percent.
Right.
Yeah, alright, and you know what the upfront MIP is? Wait, wait a minute, hold on. Yeah, yeah, upfront MIP for the FHA loan?
I don't remember what the amount is.
Is one point seven five percent.
One point seven five is upfront mortgage insurance.
Right.
And that percentage. Um, can, you can, you can roll it into the loan, right?
That's right, yeah, that's right, that's right. Yeah, you can roll it in alone.
Yeah, yeah, the, I used to get, before I watched your videos today, the mortgage insurance premium and upfront mortgage insurance premium, when I was always hearing about it, I was like. It sound like the same thing to me, like, like what is making it upfront versus let's not make it like. And then after watching your videos and stuff and hearing it being talked about, I was like, oh, there, they are the same thing, but one you have to pay in a whole or put on the loan. As well as you gotta have mortgage insurance premium. So, right.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. And then, now you understand about, um, like for, for conventional loans, the down payments. It's the minimum down payment is either three percent or five percent, you understand, well, you know, okay, you understand it. And also you understand about, um, what is the FHA loans? It's either three point five percent or ten percent depending on, right?
Credit rating, the credit ratings, right, yep.
Right, that's right, um. Now, I put this note here about sixty, thirty, ninety, thirty, because I was thinking about these different situations, alright, so I've been, you know, doing these study groups. Um, and a lot of time Rocky will say something like, if a borrower receives an. Notice of adverse action or is denied, you're right, um, they have how many days to request the reasons?
They get sixty, and then the, and then the lender has thirty to respond.
That's right, now, now here's another situation. Um, if the borrower is like denied. Based on the appraisal, like if a, if an application for credit is denied based on the appraisal. How long does the borrower have to request a copy of the appraisal?
Right.
So what?
That one is, um, ninety days.
Yes.
And it still gives them thirty, and then if I remember correctly from your video today. You said basically look at it as the whole point for those. Just timing up the disclosures is to help the borrower, not the lender, so that's why we get more time than the lender doesn't.
That's right, very good.
I told you, I watch your videos, I told you.
Watching it, that's awesome, that's awesome, yes, 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 see, understanding that logic is gonna help you.
And that works, like that, like that clicks, like when I, when I saw the numbers on there, I remembered, I was like this little voice of Lance in my head. We don't care about the lender. I was like, okay, okay.
Love it, I love it, yes, 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 that's good, that's good. And then the regulations, you know the, the letters.
I know them all, I don't know if you have a special trick to it, but I know them all.
No, I don't really know, I mean, from affinity though, you know, they have like, tell us the Godzilla, you know?
Yeah, 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 I know, yeah.
God stuff, right, um, then what's not in the APR, so here's the thing, so.
This one's hard for me, there's the not in APR and in the APR. Is I get that in the APR, it's what it costs to get the loan.
Right.
And then what's not in the APR, I get that it's things that don't cost you to get the loan, there's other associated fees.
Right.
But some of the fees at times, I'm like, to me, that seems like it's to get the loan.
Well, okay, I, I, I thought, I felt the same way, and I remember asking Rocky about it. It was one of the things, I, I asked him specifically about that same thing, because there was one of them that I was like, wait. Why, why is that, so like, for example?
Like the appraisal, right, the appraisal's not included in it, right?
Um, right, that's right, appraisal's not included, but, but like, here's the thing about the appraisal. The appraisal, yeah, it's a good point, but if you really think about it, in terms of the mortgage loan. The appraisal is not part of the cost to get the loan. The appraisal, I'm trying to think, how did Rocky?
Part of getting your application, it's probably getting the property approved for the value. Of what you're getting a loan on, but it's not actually, has nothing to do with your loan that you're applying for.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, 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 I can, I can connect the dots with that.
Yeah, and then another one that, that I thought was kind of confusing until I, until Rocky explained it to me was the part about, um. Let's see, what, oh, flood certification fees. Why is included, flood certification fees are included. In the APR, but termite inspection is not included in it.
I didn't even, I didn't even know what the hell a termite inspection is.
Well, you know, termites, like bugs.
Is that all it is, is that all it is?
All it is, that's all it is.
Whenever I come across things like that, I'm like, okay, well, why isn't there a bedbugs inspection? But if you really think about it, termites will affect the house. I, and I, but like every, I'm like, oh snap, what if there's like a different inspection, but I.
Right, 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 so, so the thing is, or the logic though, is that termite inspection is not part of the APR. Because it's not like mandatory, it's not part of, you know, say it's not like, you don't need it to get the mortgage, right? Um, flood certification fee, I'm trying to think, what was the thing about that, it was something where it's part of the APR. Because it's like, um, let's see, is it because? Yeah, I guess they, they, like, it's needed, you know, to get the loan.
Okay.
But anyway, but yeah.
I guess that makes sense too, that was, well, that's what it's like right now, currently I work for a broker. And, and as an, as a loan officer's assistant, and so that's has, that has its huge perks with studying, cause I can apply things that I'm studying to. And it also doesn't help, cause like, you know, I'm sitting there looking through applications and I'm going through and, and, and going through fees. You know, and I, every single one of them has a flood certification, and you're right, and that make, so like, when I, when I knew that flood certification was included. I'm like, it makes sense, every single one of them, you have to grab it, so like, I get that, but with what you're saying, you're right, like it. I don't see at first why it wouldn't be included or would be, but it just, it just kind of is.
Yeah, 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 so yeah, that's good, that's good, and then, um, yeah, so now Jennifer has a thing about ten, ten acts. Right, that, that can be helpful about not, not included, you know, but. Like, like me and also Rocky, we, we kind of just think of it just as like what we're saying, it's like, okay, what's really? Part of the mortgage and what's not really part of the mortgage, you know?
Right.
Uh, that's what that is.
Okay, tell me if I can, tell me if I hit ten X.
Okay.
Title.
Okay. Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, I better, I better, um, I better look at it before I can, um, alright, oh, let's see, wait, where is? Wait, 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 here it is, um.
Ten X is somewhere.
Here it is.
In the middle.
On the right hand side, okay, yeah, obviously you said title, that's right, title.
Title, escrow, notary fee.
Uh huh.
Appraisal.
Uh huh.
T E N A appraisal, um, C credit.
Uh huh, credit, credit report, right, 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 yeah.
And then termite inspection.
That's right.
And then, uh, seller concessions.
Or, or seller, seller credits?
Seller credits, that's what it is, yeah, seller credits.
Yeah, yeah, very good, very good, yeah, 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 you got that. So, and then you know your forms, you know your forms?
Yeah, so ten O three is the application, ten O four is the appraisal. And then ten O five is the, um, verification of employment.
Uh huh.
And then ten O six is verification of deposits. And then I know that because from your videos, you said deploy, employment comes first, you gotta verify the deposits. And then verification of rent. And then, uh, uh, ten O nine is.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, did you skip one, wait, wait, you said, okay, wait, wait, go back, ten O five, you said was V O E, right? V O D, ten O seven?
Verification of rent?
Of rent, that's right, then ten O eight?
Um, ten O eight.
Yeah, remember, ten O eight, eight is like, I think of eight as being like completion. So what's the thing, what's the form that's like?
Oh, it's the, it's the, um, it's the, it starts with a T, uh, the transmittal summary, it's the, it's the letter you give to the underwriter, it's your summary, here you go, this is what's going on.
Exactly.
And then the ten O nine, I don't remember.
Were you ten O nine, I think about nine, for some reason, I think the nine, I connect the number nine to like going in reverse, nine, going in the reverse.
Okay.
So what, what would that, reverse, so that's, that's a reverse mortgage.
Okay, I was gonna say, next one, I say reverse mortgage.
Yeah. Right, yeah, yeah, ten O nine, reverse mortgage, uh, so that's good. And then you know what VFW is, right?
Um, it's, VFW is the construction disbursements.
Right.
And it is a voucher fixed warrant.
That's right, you know what these four are, CO费, COC, LIBOR, and prime?
Those are the cost of the indices or the index.
Right.
Or those are four indexes, it, as in indices.
Right, four indices.
And then I know that, the, the CO费 is cost of funds index.
Okay.
And then, um, the LIBOR is the London National Bank or something like International Bank.
Okay, yeah, yeah, something like that, yeah.
And then, I don't know if we need to know that part, but.
Yeah, you probably don't, you just probably need to know what.
Okay, good, then moving on.
And then, um.
It's a good sign to know that I've over studied.
That's right, that's right, and you know what a four, four, two is, right?
No.
Okay, so remember how with the appraisal, right, the appraisal was good for six months, but if it's four months old, it needs to re.
Re-certified, here's a question I have on that, when it has to be recertified, does that mean, like? What is, like, who's doing, like, but, so the house doesn't have to be reappraised, but someone has to take the appraisal. Where or what, like, what?
Recertify it?
What's certifying it?
Yeah, I think from the modules though, I think I remember hearing something about like a BPO, like a, like, like, like a, you know.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, like a buy, was a BPO, it's like a buyer's, uh, B, buyers, buyers opinion, something opinion, I think. Or I don't know, buyer purchaser, I don't know, but.
You're, you're, I know what you mean, I feel you.
Four, two, it's like, I guess, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I, I, I assume that it's not like the full appraisal. But it's like the recertification, it's like maybe you're recertifying, I mean, it's a separate form, right?
And that's why you have it by the ten O four, just remember that there's the ten O four.
Yes, ten O four, right.
Four, four, two, okay.
Four, two, right, right, right.
I can remember that, done, like, see, I would have never remembered, like, oh, see.
Yes, connections, yes, yes, um, so yes, you know what that is, and then you know the MCR, you know what the MCR is?
MCR is the, um. Uh, isn't that the? Legal contract, no, there's four for a legal contract.
So MCR, and see, MCR has two sections to it, yeah.
Mortgage call report.
Yes, mortgage.
And it has to be submitted quarterly.
Quarterly, yes.
But I, but I, so I know that, but I don't really understand what a mortgage call report is.
Alright, yeah, I, I never really dig deep into it either, but.
Okay.
The notes, it's, yeah, MCR is a quarterly report of the condition of the business. That entity submits through the NMLS, I believe. This is the one that is due like every March first or something.
It's, it's what you have to do as a lender or a broker, letting them know how many mortgages you're doing. Early, mortgage call, okay.
Oh, that's right, now.
NMLS is calling you up, hey, what are you doing over there?
That's good, good point, and there's, there's two parts to it, right, there's the residential mortgage loan activity report, and then there's the financial condition report. Now, the, the, the residential mortgage loan activity report, I'm just reading right off of the.
Oh, yeah, you're fine.
Um, the residential mortgage loan activity report, that's completed quarterly. Within forty-five days of the end of the calendar quarter. But the financial condition report is completed annually within ninety days of the company's fiscal year end.
Yeah, that's a rough one.
Yeah, it is rough, I, I think you just need to know.
Just could do that one, you just gotta read it a thousand times.
Right, yeah, 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 cause it is kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of, uh, complex if you think, but the MCR is supposed to be. Um, done quarterly, but yet the financial condition report is completed annually, so, I don't know, but anyway. I guess, maybe it's updated, I don't know, but anyway, so, uh, yeah, so that's what that is. Alright, and then you, you know what, um, oh, so in the, in the study groups. A lot of times, um, I, I, I was thinking about this, this thing, twenty days, thirty days, and sixty days. Right, so here's the thing, right, um, here, here's a question that I've seen a lot, right, where on, on, you know, in study groups, it was about. They say like, if, um, oh, if the bar rescinds, yeah, so you know how you have the right of rescission on like the HELOC? The stuff, right, if the bar rescinds, um, how many days? Um, does the lender have to refund the escrow, I guess?
Escrow, yeah, escrow account.
Right, escrow, yeah, and that number is twenty days, twenty, right? Now, what about, what about during the, and you know the annual escrow analysis, right? If, if it's more than, what, if it's more than fifty dollars or whatever, right?
More than fifty dollars, you have to refund it, yep.
Right.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, thirty days, yes, and then you know about the tolerance, um, level thing, right?
Yeah, so if it has, if it's a zero, if it exceeds the no, zero tolerance or ten percent tolerance, you have sixty days.
Right, and Rocky makes a point to say that it's sixty business days.
Business days, CB.
Sixty business days, now, now here's another thing though, do you know about the non-clerical errors? If there's like non-clerical errors, um, like how many days? Does the, like lender have, and that's sixty calendar days. So.
Okay, so sixty calendar, um, are all of these calendar days? Uh, just sixty.
Uh, well, okay, so that, that, that sixty calendar, when you say all of these, you mean like the, the other stuff, like your twenty?
The twenty, thirty, sixty are all calendar days?
No, no, well, I'm, 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 I know that the sixty, the tolerance is sixty business days. And I'm.
That's right, sorry, I meant to say.
Yeah, yeah, busy, I think, I think the calendar days, I think that the calendar days are just like the rare occasions, like. Like this thing about the, um, the non-clerical errors, you know?
So non-clerical is calendar, and that's really like one of the only ones that's calendar.
Yeah, I think, I think so, I think.
Okay.
And then I think, I think some of the stuff, they don't really even, I, I don't know, I think some of the stuff, they don't even really say, they just say the days, you know, so I don't.
Okay.
Alright, that's that, you understand the thing about, um, the retention, the documents retention?
Yep, so if it, if like the test asks you how long, and it, and it says how long are tilladocs kept, it's referring to two years. But if it says how long do you need to keep a closing disclosure, it's five.
Right.
And then you have to keep ECOA, um, documents for twenty-five months. Because you can sue for up to twenty-four months. And then, um, everything else is two years.
Uh, wait, but you, you're missing some categories though, right? Are you, so, so, so there, there's two documents that, that must be kept in the five-year category, you know? Like, well, well, you, you said one of them, you said the CD.
The CD and then the, um, uh, the Lars.
No.
SARS.
SARS, yes, SARS, yes, the CD and the SAR.
CDs and SARS are five.
Well, now there's three of them that, that do for three years, and, and all of them start with the letter L.
Loan estimate, loan application, and the lar.
That's right, wait, 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 hold on, hold on.
Or not lar.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, no.
Wait, no, 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 I said.
Wait.
Hold on.
You said loan estimate.
Loan application.
But wait, 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 wait.
I don't, I, I totally got, I totally mixed that, the, that was a.
Wait.
You, they need to, they need to provide us with ten personal counselors, counselors for having to study for this.
Right, right.
We started losing our mind.
No, you started losing your mind, wait, you said loan app, wait, 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 hold on, hold on, so wait, the three are, um, the LE. Okay, um, and what's another one, oh, now, Jeff, and also the LAR, right, the loan.
Activity registration.
Register, register, right, it, it's called, yeah, it's, oh, yeah, you said, you said loan application, I think you meant. Uh, loan application register, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's what you.
Loan application register is the LAR.
LAR, okay.
But is, and does, does that also mean? Lo, like loan? I guess loan application register, what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, loan application register, isn't that the HUMDA thing?
Oh, yep, you're right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, here's the thing, don't confuse that with this residential mortgage loan activity report, right, that, that's not.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that, that's separate, that, 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 that's the MCR stuff. That, that, that LAR is that HUMDA stuff, yeah.
Okay, okay, so what's the third one?
So the third one, okay, so wait, you said, you said the LE, right? And you said the LAR.
Yep.
The third one is the LOC, the loan originator.
That's right, that, that's right, loan originator compensation.
Yes.
Loan application report.
Whoa, 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 no, no, no.
Why do I keep doing that?
Huh?
What, what, what was it again?
Loan application, is it loan application register?
Registry, loan application, I gotta write that down. LAR is loan application.
Registry. Yeah, I, I think, I think it's, I think it's register.
Register.
I, I think. Um.
I'll definitely do some studying on it, cause it's tripping my brain up.
Yeah, that's, um. Let's see, let me see, loan, application. Regis, I think it was register, yeah, 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 here we go. The log of applications that a creditor must keep and provide to the federal government. Is called a loan application register.
Well, that makes sense why I call it the loan application report, because. That's technically what it is, but it's, it's the loan application report, or, oh shit, I just did it again, loan application register.
That is sure.
Referring to all of your applications, you're keeping them in an LAR and submitting it, you have to keep that for three years, okay.
Uh, yes, that's right, that's right, you have to, yeah, yeah, so, so it's the LAR, the LOC, and the LE. For, is a three-year category.
And then it's the loan origination credits, right?
No, whoa, 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 loan origination compensation, right?
Compensation.
Compensation. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, so that's, okay, so you got the five years, you got the three years, then there's only one document for the twenty-five month one, right, you know that one?
Yeah, the ECOA.
ECOA, and then you could see, so, so you memorize these three categories, then you can be like, everything else is two years.
Okay.
Right, yeah, alright, you know your loan stuff here. You know your section thirty-two and section thirty-five stuff.
Yeah, what was, can you remind me, uh, BAPs and APE though?
Okay, so, so, okay, section thirty-two, which is the high-cost mortgage loan, right? So that's like really, really high, and that's the, that, you know, so the, uh, BAPs is, um, no balloons. Balloons, right, um, you have to have the ability to repay.
Right.
Um, no prepayment penalty.
Right.
And you must speak to a HUD counselor.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then on that note, a prepayment penalty. Um, is that, am I overthinking what prepayment penalty means, or does a prepayment penalty mean? You get a penalty for paying before your loans do.
That's right, that's right, that's right, and why, 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 why would, why, like, wh- why is it? Often reasonable to, for lenders to charge a prepayment penalty, because it's like they have it. Made back their money kind of, or they haven't.
Yeah, because there's an interest rate that's fixed on the amount of time, so if you're paying more, you're technically paying less of interest, right?
Right, 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 yeah, you're right.
So that's why they give you the penalty, because then there's no, if you could prepay, there's no point of them actually having those. Uh, six point five, eight point five, eight point five, there's no reason for it to be there if you could pay early.
Oh, wait, wait, I, wait, uh, wait, if you.
So like, how, it's six point five percent, um, like that, six point five percent is what puts you in a high cost, right?
So, no, no, now to clarify, now, when you say six point five, it means it's, it's these percentages that are, it means that the APR exceeds.
Yeah.
The A P O R by this one, right, okay, yeah, got you, got you.
Yeah, and because of, yeah, and so, and, and because it's a high cost, you know, there's certain. They're making a certain amount of money back off of the rate, and so if you pay earlier, there's a prepayment penalty, because.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, but you know that for high costs, um, there's no prepayment penalty.
Oh, no prepayment.
Prepayment penalty, no, and, and, and so, yeah, I think, well, and so. What I was saying though, is that like under regular situations, when it's not this type of high cost stuff, right? I was just saying that like, you know, the, 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 the logic for having a prepayment on other types of loans, right? Is so that the lender can make its money, right?
Right, okay.
No, no, he, here's how you can think of this way, if, if the, if it's a high-cost mortgage loan, wow, I mean, like the interest is so high, you're right, so. It's like, i- 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 the way I see it is that it would be unfair to penalize. A borrower to, who wants to get out of one of these loans early, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This is so hot, right?
Okay, perfect, yeah, clicks.
That's, okay, so that, that's what that is, um, yeah, so no, no prepayment.
And then ape.
And then, right, oh, you said ape is for section thirty-five, now, the, the section thirty-two one, they do have this thing about points and fees, but I, I don't think that. It's, it's not, in, in the study groups, we haven't really been focusing, like, like in the study groups, we, we really focus on. These percentages and the, and the, um, these requirements, but also just keep in mind, there's also. This regulation about the points and fees, like, like the thresholds, like they're saying that, I guess. If the points of fees exceed a certain amount, then it's considered a high-cost mortgage loan, stuff like.
Right.
Alright, so that's that, now, section thirty-five, yeah, you got the one point five, two point five, three point five, and then you have the eight, right? And now the eight, the A is the what?
Ability to repay.
Okay, and then the P is what?
It needs to have a prepayment penalty.
No, 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 it is tricky though. Um, this one also is saying, you know, this one is also high, it's not as high as this, but it is also.
Still high, okay, so then it's no.
No, no, but here's the thing, so it's no prepayment penalty except for how many years? They, they do allow it for.
They, you're right, except for two years?
Two years, yes, now, he, here's how you gotta think of this way, so this one does not allow it at all. So they're saying, this one is like, no prepayment penalty at all, this makes sense, because I mean, man.
It's expensive, right?
This is expensive stuff, so they're like, hey, no prepayment at all, this one, yes, it's expensive, but it's not as expensive this one. So this one is kind of like, okay, hey, look, no prepayment penalty unless it's for the first two years, you're right, you know what I'm saying, so they're saying that, hey. You can, you know, penalize them if they get out, you know.
I get it.
Alright, so that's, that's the first two years, um, so. All right, so that's, that's the first two years, um, so no prepayment penalty unless it's first two years. And then now that escrow, E for escrow means it must have an escrow account for at least how long?
Five years.
Five years, yeah, yeah.
Escrow, five years, and then prepay. Penalty, two years.
Yeah, okay, you understand things, thing, this, the stuff about free credit report, like, you know, under, there's, there's, you know, five reasons you can get it under FACRA, and there's like, one reason you get it under F A C T, F A C T. You understand that? You understand the, what, the six elements of a complete application, right? You understand RESPA, you understand the ability to repay?
Yep, tell me if I get it right. I learned this like very recently, so, um, mortgage, as in like your mortgage payment.
Uh huh.
Income.
That's right.
Credit.
That's right.
Employment.
Uh huh.
Debt as in debt to income.
Yeah, right, what, 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 what's another name for, yeah, debt income. D T I, right, right, right.
And then other debts.
Uh huh.
And then your, um, expenses, like what, like what, like? Like car payments and stuff.
Insurance and taxes and stuff, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, good, okay.
And then, um, simultaneous mortgages, like, like second mortgages or other mortgage. But a question I do have on that, is it only referring to that loan? Or is it, let's say, let's say I have three properties, and I'm working on just one property. Do you know if my does would apply to all of my?
Well, okay, now, wait a minute, now, remember, there, there's a D with debt.
Right.
Be like the other debt, right?
Okay.
And then, I mean, so.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Either, either, either or, right? I mean. There or you'd be in here, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then the E for expenses, you were saying, like.
Yeah, like insurance and taxes, I wonder if they also look at.
But that's only referring to on the loan, right?
Oh, like on that particular loan, you mean?
Or just on, on your loans, you're not talking, you're not saying like insurance, like your car insurance.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, I see, that's a good point.
I'm, I'm just not sure, cause when I, when I hear the word expenses.
Right.
I look at, I, I look at like how, you know how like they don't count your, um, your cellphone bill, like.
Right.
Like, are they talking about expenses as in cellphone bills? Are they talking about expenses that counts against, um?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, because remember how, um, cause remember, this is a little bit off topic, but, but it's kinda similar. Remember when they talk about in calculating D T I and how if you have a debt, but you have like ten, like, like less than ten payments left?
Yep.
Don't count it, remember?
Yep.
So, I don't know, in terms of ability to repay, in terms of like debt, I wonder if that, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, that's a good question.
That's a good question, yeah, I'm sure I'm way overlooking it.
We're way overlooking it, but it's.
Okay.
All right, so you understand that?
Yep.
All right, and then you understand the foreclosure timeline?
Yep.
Okay, you understand the flood zones?
Yep.
You stand the tolerances?
Yep.
Are you understand ECOA and Fair Housing Act to protect the classes?
So we got, uh, the ones that they both share, it's five, it's credit, race, religion.
You say credit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Color. Uh, so, okay, color, race, religion, um, and then sex, and familial status, no.
Whoa, 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 no, 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 no.
I'm saying the one that they both, the one that they both share.
So you, 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 you said sex already, you said color, you said religion, was it?
Religion.
Really, really, yeah, but you.
Sex, color, national origin. Sex, color, national origin, religion. And race, and then ECOA has three, which is age, familial status and.
No, 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 it doesn't have familiar.
Oh, no, it's, 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 uh, dang it, I knew, I know this too. It's age, marital status, public assistance, and then F H A is disability handicap, and then, um, familial status.
That's right. Now, you know Jen has a thing, score, and then she has a thing on map to memorize the ECOA.
Oh, okay.
Right, so ma- marriage, uh, marital status, age and public assistance, you know, map, yeah, so that's there.
I think I was just trying to go too fast.
Yeah, 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 true, true, true. Now, what about the, the, our N M L S number will go on what documents?
Yeah, I thought, there's five of them, it's the, the Earl, the promissory note, the mortgage, um, advertisements and, um, uh, trustees.
Right, that's right, um, yeah, yeah, and, and it makes sense, right? So like, for example, it makes sense that the M L S number will not go on the appraisal.
Yeah, there's no reason, there's no reason for it to be.
Right, um, you know what the, the RESPA disclosures are, right?
Yep.
Um, you know what TRID does not apply to, right? You know what are the three concurrent real estate ownership?
No.
Okay, there's tenancy in common.
Tenancy in common.
There's joint tenants, and there's tenant, tenants in entirety.
Okay, and what was that called again?
Oh, the, uh, um, three types of concurrent real estate ownership.
The, so the three types of concurrent, okay, and then ten, joint tenancy, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Right, and now which one can you not sell? Which, which one is one where you, it cannot be willed or sold?
Um, uh, I wanna, what were the three again? Say it again?
Uh, tenancy in common, joint tenants and tenants in entirety.
The one that can't, I think it's the last one.
Well, well, you know, you know what's funny, I, I need to research tenants in entirety, right? Cause they haven't really been digging deep into this one.
I think.
Joint tenants, oh, go ahead, what do you think?
I think tenancy in entirety means they both own the home or the property or whatever. Equally, there's no fifty percent split or whatever, it's not, it's not in common, it's, they both one hundred percent own it, I think is what it is. I could be completely wrong.
And we, 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 we go research that. Now, I know that joint tenants, it's where, you know, you can't just like sell your share, you know what I'm saying? So, but tenants in common, you can sell your share.
So tenancy in common, you can share, in common, you can share, joint, you can't.
Yeah, when you went now, when, when you say you can share, you mean, you, you can will it away to some, okay, I got you, right, 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 right.
You can will it, but you can't sell it? Or?
Wait, wait, in ti- tenants in common?
Yeah.
To tenants in common, okay, we, we get you, we'd better to look into that, but I, I, the way that I, I think of it is, tenants in common, you can kinda do whatever you, you want with it, right? But the joint tenants, you can't do that, you know?
Okay.
All right, but yeah, there's definitely, you gotta look into that. Now, what are the freehold estates?
Freehold estates, yeah, uh, fee simple, life estate.
Right, like I say, okay, what about the automated, uh, underwriting systems?
Yeah, so Fanny, Fanny Ray, Fanny May uses desktop underwriter. Uh, Freddie Mack uses L P A, loan prospect advisor.
Loan product, is it?
Product, loan product. It was previously called loan prospector.
Right, right.
And then, um, F H A is the total, um, total, uh, total car, something card.
Total scorecard.
Little scorecard, but I don't even, which I don't even know what that means, but I just know that.
I mean, that's what it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Little scorecard, okay.
Cool, cool, cool. Okay, all right, it looks like you're on the right track. Keep, keep kinda, you know?
Yeah.
You know, keep, keep at it, you know, but I think, I think you're on the right track.
Cool.
So, yeah, man, all right, man, I wish you the best, brother. Keep me posted on how it goes, all right?
No, I will, yeah, if I have any questions or anything, I'll look at some of these things that we were both kinda curious about, and if I find something that makes sense, I'll shoot it to you, but.
Yes, let me know.
I appreciate you taking the time out of your Saturday night to. Talking about it helps me so much, so.
That's awesome.